All right, well, good afternoon then. This is Eric Moore. This is the meeting of the town meeting study committee for Concord. This is the experiences subcommittee. Thank you for joining. So Katie Bresnik has agreed to clerk today. Thank you, Katie. Role would be Katie is present, Katie Bresnik is present, Eric Moore is present, Kristen Hegarty is present. We're not expecting Ellis Kaufman today. And that's who's on the call. So no public comment, given that I see no members of the public available. Shannon McAndrew is joined. Thank you, Shannon. We do not have a quorum, so we will not be approving minutes today. And let's move ahead to the chairs remarks. There we go. Yeah, so hey, so you know, I have the question, how are we doing? I think I'm not really sure how to frame that discussion. I think I'd welcome comments, I think individually, I think that's correct. But you know, I'm conscious, we've been working together for a couple of months now, and I want to make sure that we feel that we're working well towards our goals. So if anybody has any comments about that, now I'd welcome that. Otherwise, you know, again, I'll invite any email comments to that effect. I think that's correct in terms of what we mean. I think as well.
But I was gonna let Katie go first.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you.
Like, do you want to talk about it now, checking in?
Oh, yeah, let's do this. Yeah, pretty please.
Katie, do you want to go first?
Nope, but you'll go ahead.
Well, I absolutely appreciate how prepared, Eric, you show up for these meetings and how thoughtfully you kind of think through everything so that we have things to react to, to kind of keep us moving forward. I think that's really helpful. In terms of frequency, you know, I, I, well, I guess I'll come back to frequency. We can kind of talk about that a little bit, but I guess the one thing that I think would be even better on these meetings is kind of more discussion and more kind of solution finding. I, I'm, I want to be careful that we don't reanalyze things that have already kind of either been analyzed, or it's not going to change kind of the outcomes of our recommendation and really focus on, you know, what really would we recommend? And then what kind of research do we have to do to, you know, figure out if we do want to recommend those or not. And I think to do that, it would be great to, you know, hear from, you know, more of the committee members and things like that. So that's one of my two observations.
So that I understand that? Thank you. So that I understand that? Could you give me an example? What would be a good scenario that way?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, one of the things we were going to talk about, I think today is, you know, what does a good town meeting look like or something? Or however adjective we're going to use. And so I'm sorry that we don't have, you know, too many people on the line right now. But like, that's a discussion I would love to have with these committee members, because one of the great things is I think that each of us brings different perspectives. I mean, even Katie and I, you know, parents of young childrens have different perspectives. And so, you know, that would be a a good discussion, just as kind of a small representation of the town, small cross section that we could do. And then like if we were able to say, you know, this is what a good town meeting looks like, and these are some solutions that might bring us to that, I do think that would inform kind of the survey.
Good, good. Thank you. Katie, I'll go to you, please.
Um, I, well, first, I also echo Kristen's comment that I appreciate all of the work that you put into putting these meetings together, Eric. Putting all the, all the slides together and the thought into this is so much work that you're doing behind the scenes and I, I'm sure everyone appreciate it, appreciates it, but I don't know how often people say it. So thank you. I agree with Kristen. I think I didn't give this a lot of thought before the meeting today, but I think it might make sense to have like just more of a discussion session between everyone that is solution focused on what that, and that might yeah, give us some more concrete things to go with in terms of the survey and like the things that we do want to gauge people's reaction to. Because I think we've all maybe did done some of that thinking on our own, but haven't gotten the perspectives of everybody. I do think it's easier to have discussions in these smaller groups, because there's just generally less people that have something to say. So it is hard to have the discussions when we do have a lot of people. So I don't have the right answer to that, but I do think that that person's point is useful for sure.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Good. Thank you. Any other comments from anybody? So I, I agree. I think I'll put it my way, which is that I feel like I've done way too much talking. So I'd like to be hearing from other people more. So, so I think, you know, in terms of where we're at in the arc of the work, then the arc of the work of the committee. I feel like, you know, we're at the point where we really need to begin to just talking about solutions concretely. I think, you know, what we think a better meeting is, is something we all have, we all have good, good thoughts about. So I'd like to hear more about that. I mean, you know, I keep putting out rubrics and stuff like that. And I think, but I, I think, I think it's, it's better to hear more. And so my hope is that, you know, once we figure out when, I'd like to see us combine meetings again, you know, moving out of this phase of the subcommittees. That just means, you know, when do we schedule? Is it a daytime meeting or an evening meeting? And so I'll ask that, that for the folks in the call, you let me know, you know, really, I think, starting after Labor Day, what's feasible for you? Do we need to stay with the daytime meeting? Can we go to an evening meeting? And I think it would be once every two weeks. I, I think, you know, I've been meeting once a week or every week. And I think every other week, Katie's would be, would be good for everyone, so to speak. So that's my thought there. Again, I'd like to hear about scheduling that way. Katie, I see you, please.
Yeah, maybe just, just one point that I kind of forgot to mention when I was previously speaking is that I think things have been a little more abstract until recently. And I think getting into more concrete and practical details, I think would be useful just for my understanding and figuring out where we can contribute. So I think what you're saying makes sense.
Cool. Good. On the same page there. Thank you. When we come back together, I think, you know, I think the solving, quote unquote, solving the problem with a clerk, I think, again, my language would, would be helpful for me. It is that we look for a rotating clerk role. Or maybe it's that, you know, when we, when we're a larger body of people meeting, it's easier for, for folks to clerk or not clerk. But I think that, that I think is a little bit of a challenge for me. Katie, please?
Yeah, I will say I was surprised when I attended the evening meeting that no one wanted to step up and do the note taking, which I thought was kind of a shame. So I think it might make sense if you tell people, or maybe one of us can tell people if you want, don't want to tell people that is rotating and people take their turns. Because it is too much for you to lead the meetings and also have to do the note taking as well. So whatever way we can help you, let us know.
Thank you. It's on me to speak up as well, but thank you. And I think, you know, the question coming up for when we get into really talking more concretely about, about specific stuff, like how are we going to talk about clickers? Is to figure out how to do that. And I think that, you know, one thought I had is to say, you know, gosh, who would like to be the clicker leader? You know, who wants to really sort of own that topic, right? In terms of organizing collateral information about it, there's a lot out there, right? But, but organizing collateral information, framing the discussion in terms of pros and cons. You know, and, and, you know, sort of presenting the case, as it were, and letting us, letting us all debate it. So that's one approach, or maybe it's a couple of people, you know, maybe hypothetically speaking, you know, Kristen, you're the anti-clicker person. And Katie, you're the pro-clicker person. That seems a little bit, I don't know. So, so I'll welcome, I'll welcome comments about or proposals about how we're going to really make progress on, on evaluating alternatives. Clickers in specific is something that I think I think there's, there's appetite for hearing on that. Let me put it this way. I, I promised the clicker guys that they would get a hearing in clickers because they're eager to present on clickers to this group. And I think that that is a more effective presentation for them and for us. If that's something that has a little bit more public visibility than a normal meeting.
That's, I think it's a good idea.
Good. Thank you. Looking ahead a little bit to, to the fall. You know, we have a lot of work with the survey. You know, there's a lot of preparation work to be done with that and promotion work to be done with that in September. You know, we're thinking that we're going to open the survey October 1st. I think keep it open for a month, and we have to make a decision about that, but that's sort of a working assumption. And I think, you know, throughout the month, throughout the latter half of September and throughout the month, we'll be writing letters to the editor and so on. And promoting across different, different town groups. I believe that we want to have a public administrator survey. That's my belief. We haven't really discussed it. I haven't made, I think, a strong case for it. But if we're to do that, I think the timing would be that we would launch that in beginning of November and leave that up for a month and then do data analysis in that December. As an aside, Kristen, this is something, you know, I, I, I think you have significant experience leading, leading, leading committees and in town. And I think, you know, my intuition, my belief is that, my considered belief is that the experience of public administrators in the context of making, of making policy in town and their experiences in terms of outcomes at town meeting are really relevant to the work of our group. And so it's been my, my judgment all along that to understand the communication challenges in particular, the public administrators face and understand sort of how what does or doesn't happen and the hearings processes and the, and the meetings processes plays out in town meeting is important for our work in town meeting. That's my belief. I haven't really made a strong case for that. But I think I would ask you, given your experience, how important, you may be only to answer this right now and asking you to think about it, please. Is how important do you think a public administrator focus is going to be for our work this fall?
Well, what I would say right now is I think it depends on the scope of our recommendations. And so I feel like getting a handle on what would we meaningfully change? And for example, would we change recommendations on the date, the length, the location? You know, like if we, if we looked at those things and then we'd say, oh, well, you know, where, if in any of those recommendations does that input matter, then I think we would kind of go from there.
I think we have scope to recommend whatever we want. I think what, what can happen is different, you know, but we can say whatever we want in terms of an evident evidenced argument to the select board. We could communicate whatever we want to, to.
But I'm saying there's like a limited number of things that we're actually going to recommend. You know, within that we could do anything, there's probably a finite number because of what have been, what's been tried in, you know, other towns, what's been tried in Concord and, and actually what's going to move the needle type thing.
Yeah, I'm getting my head around that. Yeah, that's, that's true. There's only been so much that we can do within their, their box of regulation. And, and we don't know what the town, you know, will tolerate in terms of change. And I think, you know, helping this, helping, you know, helping this, the, the, you know, helping how the ZBA communicates something or the planning work communicates it at a town meeting, seems like it's a stretch for us. But, but so, okay, so I'll do some more thinking about that and try to be more concrete about what I think the opportunities might be for us. And then we can look at, look at it from that way. Is there a potential for impact as opposed to treating it as an area of concern? That's fair. Katie, I see you, please.
Yeah, and thinking about a survey, obviously, it's a lot of work to put together a survey. I like Kristen's suggestion because there is a finite amount of things that we might end up recommending. So I almost see this as maybe we come up with what the draft recommendations might be and then do some sort of focus group or something with folks where that this, you know, these recommendations impact their work to understand like what the implications of that are. And if we then deem that those implications are too great that it doesn't make sense to have that be a final recommendation, that might be a lower effort way to gauge that feedback and because doing a survey and analysis and then, you know, getting folks to respond would be maybe longer than we have to do this work potentially. So just a thought.
Katie, you might even be able to do a focus group at like a PTG or something meeting. Would be a very specific focus group. But I'm just thinking, there's already a gathering of people like, you know, once a month, starting in September. It's not ideal because they don't have a lot of time because they get to other business, but.
I'm wondering if I'm thinking about the wrong thing. I'm thinking about folks who work for the town.
Oh, yeah, you were talking about the public. Yeah, you were talking about public administrator. I was thinking just in, in general, like recommendations and focus groups.
So, so I, I have some thinking and communicating to do around the, the, the public administrative question. And to be clear, those are folks who are both who are on boards and, and, you know, folks who work for the town. So, so a, a parallel track to the survey work. And Keith Bergman is beginning to identify, and me as well, identify who we'd like to interview, is begin interviewing town staff and board members to understand their perspectives on improving town meeting. And I think that would include the process that, you know, the end to end process of our local legislation. And you'll hear more about that. I think the, the, yeah, we have a nice dataset now from Kari with both census records for last year and I think the year before, and from voting records for the last 20 years or so. So I think the first step there is going to be to look at the representation in, you know, how, if you look at the distribution, not to, I don't want to get into details, but there's a piece of work to be done there that is doable in September. So I, I would think that in October, we'd look to hold one or more hearings near term, but not necessarily obvious proposals, right? It's not, you know, it's not clear to me which way clickers should go, for example. I think we should talk about remote town meeting in the context of a potential pilot, because I think, you know, understanding what the process is. The, the, it's not going to be easy to sort of get approval to do that through the state. And I'm not even sure that we should pitch it as like, we know what we want it to be. So, but to talk about the prospect of a remote town meeting in the context of it being contingent is, I think, something that would be an appropriate thing for here. And then continuing to interview town staff and board members. My belief is that, you know, we would benefit by having a forum for, for, for public administrators to talk about their, their challenges. That would be informed by the interviewing that we do. Maybe we'd figure out who to invite to that. And also some sort of a survey. We can talk about that later in terms of priorities. And then the concrete stuff, right? Really talking about solutions. The third column is that in September, we should begin talking concretely about different proposals and to see where we stand on them and what, what more we need to do to learn, learn more about them. And so top of mind there is electronic voting, remote town meeting, or referendum town meeting. You know, without judgment, I mean, I think we need to address those explicitly. And then I think that work is going to carry, it's going to be the center of what we're going to be discussing over the next, over the next two months. At next two to three months. And I think by the time we get into mid-November, we should have a pretty clear idea as to what it is that we're going to be going to, going to the select board with and by, by the beginning of December. Because I do expect that, hey, you know, we're lined up to do that. So to make an interim report to them. It may not be a written report. But certainly it'll be a pretty rich deck, as it were. But, you know, there's, there are going to be things that we want to ask them to think about. And that's, I think that's a big finish line for this, this coming quarter. I'll pause and see if anybody has any comments. Katie, I see your hand up. I don't know if that's, it's still there, is it?
Yes, I just have one comment. It's something we can think about. If this fills the need for the town administrators, this would only apply to people probably residing in Concord and registered voters in Concord. But if on our survey for everyone, we did have a question about whether people serve on a committee or in some sort of administrative fashion in the town, we could stratify some of those survey results by their participation. And that would tell us whether, you know, some of the ideas that we have, they have a different feeling about whether there's benefit or not. And if that saves time in doing a second survey, without adding too much additional to our original survey, that could be an approach we take as well.
Yeah, good. We had that. That's, that's in survey one. It's not in survey two. So it would be a potential add to whatever survey next is. Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll pause here. I see some citizen comment. David Allen, I'll recognize you, please.
Thanks, Eric. To notice it will turn out to be the case that not just myself, but a whole group of us have done in several words, a lot of work on clickers, on what you're calling electronic voting here. Obviously, we're intent on making that available as well. Also, let me express my appreciation. I've said several times before. I think how important it is that the committee itself dig in on this particular subject, not just this, but certainly on this before it goes out to the town to get information from the town. And that's what's happening here. That's what your plan is. I appreciate seeing it. So thanks.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments before I close this section? And move on to the next topic. Okay. All good. Thank you. All right. So yeah, just for the select board in December, right? I think we'll want to be able to make a recommendation pro or con about clickers for town meeting 25. That's not to rule them out for beyond there or, or to rule them in for beyond there. But we'll, we'll feel that we know enough for a recommendation when we're the other is a big question. Any changes to the warrant format? We'd need to come in, I think, by, by early December. Any, any suggestions around article scheduling as well? Any suggestions around the hearing and collateral for hearings? We haven't talked about these things. I think, you know, there's a lot of statute around citizen petitions. And I think the moderator does a lot of work in terms, in terms of sort of supporting citizen petitioners and, and guidance that way. I have an instinct that there's some opportunities there, and that would be something we'd want to talk about. Just an instinct. I think the question around, so the previous meeting with the logistics subcommittee, we talked a bit about the legislative picture for a remote town meeting, or really around home rule. And the picture is really that home rule takes a long time. And that anything, you, you benefit by having a coalition of towns that have an interest in home rule petitions. And, you know, you have a consistent petition across multiple towns increases your chances of getting something through. As well, framing the work of the object of the petition as a pilot rather than a, a, a permanent change may help as well. And so the question that we might choose to put together for the select board in December, because it could, could appear as a warrant article, is something around support for something like that. A, a third topic, and I don't have any, any judgment about this, is, is there, is there a longer term need or opportunity for this committee or a committee like it to support town meeting and legislative success locally? And, you know, bottom line, any articles for the warrant. So Carmen, I'll recognize you, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that I think it would be important for one or more members of this committee to connect with the Elvis Committee, the Electronic Voting Committee in Wayland, that has done an awful lot of research on on remote voting and, and, and they have, they may be the only open town meeting that has legislation pending for, there, there are some representative town meetings, but they're in fundamentally a different position than an open town meeting is. But I think that you'll want to pick their brains, understand where they're coming from, see how they are answering the questions that we know come up, such as protecting voter integrity and security of the vote, the security of whatever platform is used against intruders and manipulation of the vote, et cetera. And, and there's a bunch of other questions also. What happens to the deliberative process and so on? And, and they've clearly thought about those things and, and so you have some, you, there's a real opportunity to cross fertilize there and find out how they're thinking about things and whether or not what they're thinking you all think makes sense for Concord or gives you some additional food for survey questions. That may be another question as well. And so there are those three citizen petitions that were referred to this committee for a specific recommendation to town meeting this year on what to do about them. And one was electronic voting and two was the remote voting proposal for seeking home rule legislation. And the third one wasn't cast as a home rule petition, although that is the only way that it could happen. And that is the Australian ballot.
I've been calling a referendum town meeting. Is that, that a fair way to call it?
I, I, you know, I, 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 I think so. I, I guess the only question I would have is whether some people would consider calling it referendum town meeting to be kind of pejorative in some way. And whether the Australian ballot feels like a more neutral description. I, and I suppose the downside of Australian ballot as a description is it isn't necessarily obvious what that means.
Yeah, I thought referendum would be more descriptive. All right. Thank you, Carmen. David Allen, briefly, please.
David Carr and I, let me maybe turn on the video if I'm lucky to turn this thing on. I'm not very good on this damn iPad. David Carr and I, for a half dozen years, have been working with Elvis, as Carmen mentioned, in Wayland. Dave Bernstein in particular. So let me offer our offices to make introductions, identify the person on the committee to work with them and so forth. We go back and forth with Dave and that crew regularly.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. So the big question is going to be how, how does this committee engage with that work? Is it some person? Is it multiple people? I don't know yet, but we'll have to figure that out. So moving ahead to the survey. So, so what happened? So I wrote a draft, I'll call it survey one with kind of a broad focus, both local democracy and town meeting. And then Katie wrote a survey, I'll call that survey two, which focused on just town meeting. And so a couple of questions then, right? What, what's the right box, so to speak, for the survey? Is it the broad one? Is it the narrow one? And I think there are two, two considerations. What's the right approach to get people to begin the survey? And I can, I can explain my thinking about that. And then also, what's the right approach to getting people to finish our survey? Katie, let me just pivot to you and, and see how, how do you think we should be talking about this stuff?
Yeah, first, I, I, so what, maybe I'll just give an overview of what I did. So I took what Eric had as his draft of the survey. And looking at it, I was thinking like, you know, in maximizing people finishing our survey, cutting down the length made sense in my perspective. And given that I was kind of thinking of our remit as specifically town meeting, I kind of focused on those things. I was thinking in terms of framing, we could still frame it in like the vein of local democracy. I mean, I would love to get a ton of data from people. I'm just worried they wouldn't fill out a ton of questions. So I kind of tried to think about as I was going through it, which items we might use in an analysis. And with how we would analyze like the categories of data specifically. So if we would like separate things out into categories, which categories would we be comparing to cut down on the number of response options? But is it the right approach? I don't know. Am I missing, are we missing something? Probably. And I think this is like the, a good venue to, to have that discussion and get everyone's feel for what that survey should look like.
Well, thank you. Kristen Hegarty, let me just go to you and get your initial thoughts, please.
Yes, so my initial thoughts is, is much more focused than, than broad. So like the direction Katie was heading, I would actually even pare it down more. However, I want to talk a little bit about, you know, what, what we're going to use like the, I know we want to understand, you know, where people are coming from. But why? You know, does it matter if it's this, you know, parent of a school age person or retired person in terms of our recommendation? And I'm not saying it doesn't. I just want to discuss a little bit about having the demographic data and then really trying to analyze it across. Is it going to make a difference for what we recommend? As opposed to, I was kind of thinking of like a, you know, how likely are you to attend if, you know, these, these seven conditions? Would we just take the, the majority of people said, you know, they're more likely to attend, so this seems favorable? Or are we going to wait one audience more than another? Or are we going to wait one audience more than another? But Katie, let me know about that.
Yeah, uh, I think that's very interesting to think about, like getting like whether with these changes would actually mean that people come or not versus whether they just like them. Um, so I appreciate that thought, and I think it might make sense. When we go through the questions is to like critically think, would we do anything different depending on the response of that? And if the answer is no. Um, then we shouldn't ask it probably. And then it's something that would be interesting, but not is not super relevant, and then therefore not worth someone's time.
And to Katie's point, like, I love data too. Like, we we like to take surveys. We don't mind, like, investing our time in doing this, but. As many, I don't, I'm sure Katie has done way more surveys than I have, and you just know what a small sample size you get. And, you know, in in my experience, it's been, you know, give the minimum questions. If we then, like, we could even ask if they want to contribute their. Like email address if they want to follow up survey, because some people like the back and forth. And then, you know, we close the loop by saying, you know, we're going to publish the results of this data as kind of an incentive for people to do that, which they would know anyway, because it's publicly available. But. You know, I had always heard that sometimes, you know, the shorter survey, but then it becomes a dialogue, right? So we get the preliminary amount of data. But then we say, okay, we heard you, and now we have, you know. Some additional questions, because then people are kind of invested in it. But I, yeah, I worry that a a really long survey is. Um, we're not going to get enough uh response. Or it's going to be skewed toward the people who have the time to respond, and those are the same people who have the time to go to town meeting.
Right. Yeah, so so I I don't think it was necessarily clear and it wasn't clear enough in the survey one design. Uh, but the idea was to have part one and ask a bunch of questions and then say, hey.
Right, where do you want to continue? Yeah.
Right. And so that, you know, presumptively, then the folks who were more engaged by the subject. Uh, or or by the survey would continue. Uh, Katie?
Yeah, and I I was thinking like when I saw the the opt-in to additional questions, some of those I felt were pretty key for everyone to respond to. And so I think it probably is a a discussion between us and figuring out what we're looking for the answers to and prioritizing those. Um, I hesitate to say that we would do an additional follow-up survey just because we don't have. Like a full-time staff working on this and to develop a second survey and then to do a back and forth and link people's data is just like. A lot of work that I don't think we have time for.
Yeah.
Unless, like, I think a lot of other groups who have done this do have some sort of consulting agency with full-time people working on it. So I think we'll just have to be mindful of the resources that we have to do that. Um, so I think we should have a small set of questions that we want most people answer to. Branch, do some branching logic to get some additional information for those that are engaged and interested. Um, but we the resources are limiting, I would say.
I I I agree with that approach. I think that's a good idea. So should we, uh, can we go through Survey Two? Or do you want to decide whether to go through Survey One or Survey Two?
Uh, let's go through Survey Two. Uh, and I could ask some questions about that as well. Um, let me bring that up here.
And just know, I'm going to ask to get rid of like all of the questions. And you can say, no, we're going to keep that one, and that's fine. But, um, you know, to Katie's point, like, what are we?
Yeah, I love that approach. Be critical.
Yeah. But I I, yeah. Even even the um, even the part about um, why people don't attend. I I think we have so much data about that, that. That I'm not even sure it's.
Is this clearly visible?
Um, I, yeah, mostly. If you can make it a little larger, I'm sure that's good for some folks. That's good.
Okay.
Uh, so. Do you want me to do an overview of this, Eric, and that? Or do you want to go through it? It doesn't matter to me.
Well, we have it in front of us, right? So so uh, there's an intro. Um, so so, yeah, sure, Katie, let let's just go through question by question to get your thinking about. Uh, why it's there, and we can also comment on the questions as we go as well. Is it okay?
Yep, um, and maybe I took I took some of the verbiage from your survey for the introduction. Kind of pared it down a little bit and focus on democracy. My my thought on this was like, I feel like I'm generally. Unfortunately, at this point in my life, a lower information voter. In person, so I tried to come at the perspective that maybe more people in town are. But that's my assumption that. But I don't know, so I tried to.
No, I I I I think there, I think. Probably more lower information voters than higher information voters.
I hope there one day be a higher information voter.
Um, so so I think, you know, one one thing that goes back to Survey One is just. You know, two two people in ten in town, you know, red voters have come to town meeting at some point. You know, maybe it's three and ten, but it's it's not as but not a big number, I would believe. Uh, and seven and ten vote in the presidential election. So so we're not like, you know, and I think there's a lot of. A lot of interest in town in terms of national political and policy issues. Um, but town meeting is is. You know, in a corner in terms of interest. And so. You know, right away, the question is, am I answering a survey? Am I taking the survey on town meeting? I don't care about it. You know, D D E I had a response, you know, response rate challenge that way as well, that you had to think the D E I was relevant before you would do the survey. Uh, the history, the historical commission has an issue as well, you know, uh, I don't know what the response rate is, right? But but. You know, I couldn't I couldn't answer any questions, because I didn't really know what they meant by historical structure or why I should care. And so so, you know, the introduction can be. You know, again, you know, we can look at the introduction as a way to sort of bring people into the survey. Uh, and the framing that, you know, that that that's the stuff that Alice has prepared, both in terms of, uh, you know, what goes in the note card. That goes out and in terms of how we talk to the P T G or whatever, can talk about democracy. But but just a town, you know, a a survey on just on town meeting, I worry is a little bit too wonky to to attract a a broad response rate. So I don't know. I don't know how to test that, right? But but.
Let's go through the questions and see.
Yeah, I was thinking our blurb, like our advertising of this could specifically say like whether or not you've attended town meeting. We're interested to hear what you have to say. Um, and so that it brings people in explicitly, like, we're not just looking for people who have been here before. But there's nuance to that, and hopefully Alice is our communications expert will help us say that in a.
She apologized for not being here today, but she had a a pretty serious commitment today, so. Um, uh, so, you know, yeah, are you a registered voter? You know, my assumption is that, right, this the cards would go out just to registered voters, but but I think to your point, Katie. Um, you know, the link is going to be out there and the and the and the, you know, here and there. And so the screening question seems to be pretty fundamental.
Yeah, I was like, do we add it? Do we not add it? But we could get responses from people who aren't, and I thought it interesting. But. I mean, does it matter? Don't know. So that's something we can think about. Um, age group, I created this question. Um, I collapsed the categories a little bit, just thinking we don't need a ton of age categories, but we want to capture potentially different phases of life. Um, but not have such granular data that it's just not interpretable. Um, it's possible these categories could be collapsed further. Um, but thought age was an important thing to be asking, thinking we have some sort of um. A a non-representative group that that attends town meeting currently.
Um, I think, uh, you know, so from the census, we've got. Year, you know, we've got year by year, how old, you know, that that's that granular. Uh, and so to me, understanding the age group. Allowing us to sort of wait responses relative to the registration data, I think would be nice. And the question is, is is fifteen years? Too coarse-grained or not to 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 wait? Um, so that's that's my only thought there. Yeah.
The only problem if it's the census is created differently, if we do want to do some comparison and representativeness with the census, and it's not collected in the same way. That makes it more challenging. Um, but I think that's the only downside to having different categories. I don't think this is too coarse to make us to make to analyze the data just from the survey.
And the uh, the survey from thirty years ago was in decades, so I don't know if that would be any advantage to being able to compare them versus now.
I mean, I wouldn't worry too much about comparing to the thirty years ago data necessarily. I mean, we're 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 still dealing with the same, basically the same issues that we dealt with thirty years.
Oh, the same issues. I don't know if attitudes have changed. So that that's part of it.
Well, right, right. So the how long have you lived in Concord question? Tell me about that one.
Yes, I I could go either way on this one. I was thinking there could be some sort of stratification we have by newcomers versus non-newcomers. Getting a sense of what barriers they see or changes they. Might be interested in, um. So that's where I was coming from.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I I think, you know, I think about um Concord's identity groups. Uh, you know, newcomer, uh, oh, oh, you know, uh, real conquered. Uh, um, you know, uh, uh, raising a family, retired, empty nester. Um, that that I think when we talk about whether town meeting itself is representative of Concord or not. I think we're talking about it in terms of, you know, the participation of of seniors. You know, the participation of these different identity groups in town meeting relative, again, to to what we think of as Concord, what is representing Concord. So, you know, so we could have a town meeting that's full of people who have only lived in Concord for the last five years. And it it could be great, right, in terms of in terms of the representation of of registered voters. But I think, you know, when we get five or, you know, five to five percent or ten percent turnout at meeting. That that the balance of of people who've turned out is so different than our ideas about. You know, Concord's identities, that's a tension. It it stresses the credibility of meeting. Um, so so we could look at question three and question four. Uh, in terms of identities, we could look at question three and question four in terms of, you know, the opportunity cost for getting to meeting. Um, but I think, I I think. You know, the question about how long have you lived in Concord, to me speaks to not, you know, how hard is it to get to meeting? But but, you know, how how do you see yourself in relationship to Concord? Do you feel like you belong here? Do you not belong here? Do you feel you're looking for more community here? Uh, so so.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, to me, the question about, you know, uh, your relationship to Concord and your identity in Concord is salient to how we understand. Um, you know, who's responded to the survey and to who of the of those segments, who's really committed to or really engaged by participating in civic stuff versus not. Because if the folks who've like, you know, folks who, you know, uh, I don't really feel like I belong here. And if they're not showing up to meeting, that's an opportunity for us. Right?
I was thinking like for this less than for the like newcomer category, that could be. A category of people who are newly interested but can be easily alienated from the process versus those who have been here a long time. And who are going to go regardless of what changes we make. So it could be that we look at those newcomers and see what things they think would be a great benefit to them attending. And that could be things that we focus on. But. I think if we have a place to cut a question, this could be something that we don't need.
Okay.
And and I that's a, I think that's a good logic, you know, particularly if we're waiting, you know, certain groups, we want more of this group, so we're going to wait their responses more, so that that's helpful. What I what I want to avoid is this, um. You know, how long have you lived in Concord as if. My my response is more than yours if I've been here longer or if I've been. Uh, like, just even the perception of the length of time you lived in Concord affects how we're going to. Um, receive your information, which is actually what you're saying, but it's the opposite, right? You know, you're saying we want to hear from newer people. Um, which would be great in the case of Tommy. Okay, can continue on, but I just.
So so do we, you know, is it to cut question three or is it to reframe that? To something else?
Well, do you have any other reframed for the identity groups later on? Because I I I would mark, I would strike that one, but then I would see if you have.
Uh-huh.
Um, you know.
There there's some stuff in Survey One around that, but but not in this.
Yeah, I got rid of things around like. Your relation to Concord and left it like as this question. So maybe it's a different question that we want to ask that may be more similar to something in Eric's. Um, first version of the survey, if we do want to like get a sense of belonging.
So so let's go through this, and then if there are pickups we want to address, we can look at the other one, too, if if we want.
Um, the next, sorry, go ahead, Eric.
So Q four, yeah. So to me, I interpreted this as really asking about um. Both Q, I'm sorry, Q four and Q five, I'm sorry, were about, you know, what what are the opportunity? What what are the commitments that you have that create high opportunity costs for getting to meet it? Right? And so. So, you know, what's your work situation? You know, what's your caregiving situation? And there are different dimensions to that. You know, how flexible is your time? Uh, so that that's that's how I prefer to think about Q four and Q five. But but, um.
And and I would say. I I don't think those are necessarily relevant to the person's. Um, willingness to attend, right? So for whatever reason, like, how likely am I to attend? Maybe it's because I'm a parent or other caregiver, maybe it's because I'm a full-time employee or whatever. But I don't, I don't know that. I I would rather understand their willingness to attend in in different reasons, or especially if they're like. I'm just not willing to come, right? Like, you you could, you could pay me money to go, which was the Matt Johnson suggestion, and I'm still not going to go. That person will probably not fill out this survey.
Right.
Um. But I think it's important to. Understand, you know, if we make changes regardless of for whom they benefit, because we don't want to make changes that exclusively benefit one audience. But I don't think anything we would do would be the to the detriment of another audience necessarily. But so again, when I'm saying this, it's really in terms of. You know, for shortening it, but I know, Katie, you're really thinking about. You know, that that anal analysis and and, you know. By having this information, what that would be able to do for later questions, so.
Yeah, I was thinking of this as really like to stratify response, future responses. So like. What? These are clearly things that take up people's time and which. Potential improvements. Are favored by people who fit in these different categories, and we can look at within across the categories if there's, you know. Um, if it's favored by more groups or. Select set specifically when I was thinking about caregiving responsibilities like for myself. And thinking about the age groups to break down kids in, like, right now, the solution for childcare is to have a gym full of kids three and over.
Until ten P M.
Yeah, until ten P M, which is like.
And the kids usually go to sleep at seven, you know.
And so I was thinking like school, like elementary, middle school versus like daycare age versus high school, when maybe your kids can stay home. I don't know. I've never, don't have kids at all. Um, but thinking of, you know, how we can target um different recommendations that might address. Issues that are faced by the different groups here.
So if we looked at the strata and really coarse-grained, it would be. I just don't have time to come to meeting for whatever reason. Uh, I'm not that interested in meeting. Um, or. It's I'm interested and I have time. Is that are those the three? You know, I'm interested, I don't have time, I'm not interested. Uh, I'm interested and and for the most part, I do have time. And could could, you know, could we merge Q four and Q five into that?
I'm still trying to think of like one, I my idea is like we are, at least for caregiving groups, caregivers. I think we are trying to target things that make it easier for those groups of people to attend. And so I think we should ask about that at least to understand the. Um, things that we could implement that they would see a benefit in. But what employment is, I don't know that we need employment, I guess.
But we have a, one of the interventions that we're thinking about testing is just would you would having a family friendly family-friendly setting help you show up? And my my sense is that maybe that would be a way of testing that.
Yep.
Yeah, and I guess I was thinking there could be things beyond having a family-friendly setting that we want to look at that may be addressed. We can look at those specifically in which are. More favored by these groups, um, because I don't think we have had a good discussion on what those solutions look like yet.
Right, it would be the weekend, the weekend setting. Uh, and it would be ending earlier, and it would be that, you know, if I know when to give an article is I can I can count on it being being done. Right? Those to me are the solutions that that surface there. And so my thought is that maybe the different solutions, even independent of knowing, you know, what what your segment is, is. Yeah, that's it goes back to, right, if I if I know that, you know, your your opportunity cost, your your burden. Is because you're doing family caregiving, would these solutions make a difference for you? Right? So so if we're trying to sort of intervene and say, we want to be able to get more family types to come out. But, you know, do the family types benefit? But do they see a benefit of these solutions or not? This goes back to what you were talking about.
Yeah, and I think it's also like in our final report, we say like people with children. Thought this would be useful, and so we have some justification for our recommendations. Um, and which I I think. Allows us more data to support what we say in our report and. In in, I don't know, that's, I guess, my thinking.
Um, Kristen Hegarty, do you have any comments? Alice, I'm sorry, Carmen, it's your hand, but let me just go to Kristen for a moment.
No, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Carmen, please.
Um, one comment that I've heard several times in various public settings is that. Um, one comment that I've heard several times in various public settings is that. Town meeting taking place as it does typically in the evening. Uh, makes it impossible for people with, um, uh, work obligations in the evening. Or, um, um, caregiving obligations in the evening. I'm, I'm just wondering whether asking people about a, um. Uh, uh, the, the period of time during the day in which they are. Engaged in work or caregiving would be a thing you would wanna know. Um, so I just raised that as a question. And then the other thing that I will note is that four C says not employed or in school. And I, I wonder, I, I just, I recall lots of sensitivities, um. For people who weren't employed or in school, but worked really hard because they were working at home all day. Um, taken care of, maybe people above them a generation and people below them a generation. So I, maybe there's a different way to put that, maybe not employed outside the home or something like that.
Right, right. Yeah, the, the, the survey one, uh, looked at different dimensions of caregiving that way. Um, but I think, you know, the question, you know, I think going back to Katie's, uh, uh, thought is that, that, um. We'd like to be able to know how people with different categories of burden, so to speak. Uh, are, are, are responsive to different kinds of solutions. Right, so it's, it's two things, right? One, again, can we understand our population in terms of the distribution of burden? Right, and then the other one is, is what, what solutions are, are they responsive to?
Yeah, I'm get, I'm thinking like. In terms of employment. Yeah, we haven't really talked so much about how that makes it challenging for folks to attend, although there are challenges.
Right.
As, especially as Carmen mentioned. I'm not, I'm just trying to think of like in a report or in, in an analysis, what we would do with employment.
Right.
Probably not much.
Yeah, I would skip that one.
Right. Yeah, uh, again, it comes back to just how busy are you, right? It could be many different ways to be busy. Um, but, but some busy is, you know, we, we're talking about trying to be able to accommodate. Uh, through interventions and, and some we just have to accept these people are too busy.
If there are options to make me less busy, that would be even better.
Yeah, I'll, I'll write some up for you.
But I mean, Katie, if you're just, as we're going by, just mark, you know, like probably remove and, you know, can, can be made, you know. A decision later, we'll just kinda do kind of like a quick and dirty pass.
Yeah.
Um, well, ju- just to just play devil's advocate for a moment, I mean. You, you would probably never propose as a solution that you start town meeting at nine o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday, right? And, and the reason we wouldn't do that is because we know that. Um, a huge swath of our population has a job or is in school. Or, um, is getting kids off to school and that would not work for them. So, uh, so we do choose evenings and weekend afternoons on occasion instead. Um, so I just wonder whether the time of day issue is one that it's. That we're safe, just assuming that we know what that looks like, or whether it should be, the assumptions should be validated.
Yeah, maybe, uh, uh, bye, Kristen.
I, I mean, I'm hoping to validate it with like, how likely are you to attend town meeting if it's multiple nights a week? How likely are you to attend it on a Sunday afternoon? How likely are you to attend it? Like, that's how I'd like to gauge it, as opposed to the inverse, which is like, I'm too busy, I can't come and stuff like that, so.
Mm-hmm.
But, but to your point, Carmen, yes, I really do wanna validate that, so we can like, oh, a lot of people said they could. We had the same number of people said they could come on a Sunday or, you know, Monday nights, but.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I will remind people when we went through all of those other, um, uh, studies, the town meeting study is. At least one of them, maybe it was the Acton one that had kinda multiple groups, Acton Leva winner voters relatively recently that said. We looked regardless of when the meeting was, it didn't affect participation. I'm not saying we won't recommend that, but, um, it would, it would still let, let people kind of opt in, say, yeah.
I guess did, did it affect representations, the question?
Well, yes, that's a good question.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, uh, moving on, Katie, uh, to recent participation.
Yeah, so I think tonight, I took this from somewhere, I think it was the ninety-five survey and your survey, is that, was that?
No, my survey was some, my survey was none, uh, some, most or all, I'm pretty sure.
Um, I, I feel like I might have taken this from ninety-six, cause I don't think I made this up.
For a number, and my issue with the ninety-six survey was, I don't know.
Yeah, exactly, I'm good with, so, I'm good with like, or, you know, how much do you agree with the statement? I always try to attend town meeting, or I, you know, tend, whatever, but yeah.
But basically what this is trying to get at is, yes, I come or no, I don't.
Right.
And if you come, then there are certain questions, if you don't come, then why?
Yeah.
Um, so I think we can change this for sure.
But again, my concern with when we focus on why they're not coming. I'm afraid we're gonna lose people before we offer them reasons to come. Because I, I, I mean, what are we going to learn about why people don't come that we haven't already learned?
We don't know why people don't come, I mean, we don't know. We don't know if people don't come because, sorry, we don't know if people don't come because they're too busy, they're not interested. Um, or it's, it's too awkward to get to, right? I mean, if people wanna come, but they can't come, can we make it easier for them to come? If they don't wanna come.
Right.
We'd like to know that they're just not interested.
Yeah, I think we know, yeah, I think we know why people who sometimes come have a hard time. Coming, but I, what I don't think we know is the people who don't come, why they don't actually go. But the, I guess the question is, are they interested to come? And if so, like, how can we ma- make it easier for them? That's really what we're trying to get at, and maybe there's a different way to ask that.
Um, and so that I think would be really important, so that I think we saw in here like, you know, how satisfied. Something to do with the fact of how satisfied are you with status quo, or, you know, it's okay for other people to make decisions. I think those are the critical questions, right? Like to Carmen's point from a, a meeting or two ago, when she was like. Some people are just happy, they trust, you know, the, the, you know, recommendations being made and they know they don't need to bring their vote there. So I guess my, um, hope is that we have plenty of. Uh, information to be gained in that respect, as opposed to kind of just saying, cause yes, people are too busy. Everybody's too busy, like, you know, like, so I, um, is it an inconvenient time? These are true for everyone, like, it is not convenient for anyone in this town to attend. Three nights of meetings for like twelve hours, period, end of story. So I just wanna make sure that, um. You know, we don't dwell too much on the whys, but. You're listening to me and I'm trying to hear you guys say that so that I don't knock everything off, but, so thank you for listening. And, and it's okay, you know, if, if the stuff still stays on and everything, it's just that I wanna make sure that people get through the survey. And I wanna make sure that we're getting, um, more of the, the positive, yes, this would work for me, rather than these are all the things that don't work for me. But our solution is only gonna be like one thing, and that's why I say like. If there's only so many levers we can pull, then having all this data might be somewhat irrelevant.
Yes, I, I think that, um. Uh, I mean, the two classes of interventions are getting, making it easier for people to come. And then for the people who do come, having a better experience. So, uh, sorry, um, so, okay, so, so my question about question seven, right, is. Uh, the phrasing of this, I, I mean, to me, it's like there, and we saw this with the, the town meeting survey from this year. Um, which was, you know, addressed to people who came to meeting, right? And there it was, do you try to come to most meetings or all of them? Or do you just come for a certain, 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 uh, articles? Right, and so I think, I think that's what this question Q seven is asking, is that right?
Um, I guess what I was trying to get at is like one group that we don't. Um, capture well, I think in past surveys, is the people who can attend. Uh, for a limited time, not necessarily whether they're interested for an item or not. But that, you know, three nights is too many, so you can't come to all of them. And in past questionnaires, I think those are often captured more so in like, I always come to town meeting. Um, but I think there, these are the groups that we wanna make it easier for, is people who just aren't coming every night. Um, or can't.
Right, so, so I'll get you in just a second, Shannon, so to me, the question perhaps is. How do you budget your time for town meeting? Do you try to come to all of it? Do you pick a night, or do you pick one or more articles that matter most to you? If you do come, that's about how you budget.
Trying to take notes at the same time, I think that makes sense.
We are recording too, so.
Yeah, that's, I'm definitely gonna have to go back, um, given the, a very active discussion, which is great. Um, yeah, I think that makes sense, so it's people who try to attend all nights. To, we have to be selective around which, which dates you.
Pick a night.
Pick a night, um, or attend based on specific.
Yeah.
Items. I guess ideally in terms of an analysis, I would think like it would be easier to have the person's top option versus like select all that apply. Because then that makes it really hard to figure out where people fall.
Yeah, I agree with your top option, yeah.
Well, wait, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um. Um. Is this where we're gauging? This isn't where we're gauging potential solutions, right? For attendance, attendance.
I see this as like something that we would stratify our solutions based on. Is like figuring out which groups these solutions actually address.
Interesting, okay.
That's what I was thinking, at least.
Yeah, I guess my thinking is that, that I think we'll have an opportunity. Uh, to make it easier for people who do budget by article to engage if those are high interest articles. So I think we have an opportunity to, to address that particular niche of our market, as it were. Uh, Shannon, I wanna recognize you, please.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to comment specifically on the words in person. I think that reads a little confusing to me, like, um, you know, we live stream the meeting. Is someone reading this as like, oh, yeah, I didn't actually attend on Tuesday, but I watched the live stream. You know what I mean? So like, if you just said, when you attend annual town meeting, do you usually attend all sessions? Without, cause I think if you put in person, it's like. It kind of reads to me like, well, is there a different way to attend? Which like, you know, we wanna talk about remote participation and, and stuff in the future, but that's how it kind of read.
Yeah, I struggled with that when I was writing this, because I am the person who attends one day in person and then watches the rest of it. On my TV and I am, I'm always like, well, did I attend or did I not? Well, I couldn't vote, I would have loved to be there, so I'd like trying to capture the people who are actually in the gym, because that's where you need to be to vote. And how best to do that, yeah, so, and that's interesting, you, you thought of it the opposite way, so clearly we need to rethink this question.
Thank you. Um. Um, I actually, uh, I thought I was happy with question nine. If we have any other comments about it, um. Uh, I, question ten, I think was the same question about answering quantitatively versus qualitatively. Um, and then as well, I think special town meetings are different than public hearings or committee meetings. Uh, perhaps to say town meetings and special town meetings and, and, uh. Uh, uh. And Q six, and then to say, uh, public hearings or committee meetings, uh, in Q ten.
I, I would agree, and again, I do think numbers are hard. Um, and so maybe it's a Likert scale, how frequently do you attend? Never, rarely, uh, sometimes often.
I guess maybe we could do something like. Yeah, I guess I was thinking like for me as a low in, information voter. Like, I mostly just think about annual town meeting and not really necessarily the special town meetings, and then I kind of get confused about why they're different. And then I'm like, well, is this group to address annual town meeting, or is this group to address? Both special town meetings and annual town meetings? I'm thinking we mostly talk about annual town meeting, which is why I focused the question on that, and that's what people think about. But you're right, they are different.
Yeah, big, big time, yeah.
But, but special town meeting is usually for an article or something, so that would almost be the equivalent of a high interest article. So, I mean, but, but I, I, I would separate and public hearings or committee meetings, cause I think that's the prep. Um, I would, I would not, I would take special town meetings.
So maybe we should just not ask about special town meetings?
I, I, I don't think you need to, that's.
Um, and in terms of public hearings, et cetera, maybe this is something where we ask about frequency. And like quantify it by some timeframe that makes people answer, like in the same thing, like. Um, once a month or some, some kind of. Think with time that so everyone is kind of thinking about the same way, if that matters.
Yep.
I think the question is here, do people go or not?
Right.
Analyze it, so maybe we wanna do like, you've attended more than a certain number or something to like, yet. Cause I think there are people who would have gone to one and not. Engaged again, like maybe there's something we can think about in terms of a dichotomy here.
Right, so folks who come to meeting, but don't, don't go to hearings or committee meetings? That may be an opportunity, because those, those folks who come to meeting but haven't engaged with what's going on, don't really understand the context or the issue. Uh, around, don't necessarily understand the context of the issue around a motion presented at a meeting, so what I mean by that.
That's me, like, I had no idea that all of this happened behind the scenes, so I'm assuming that a lot of people don't know. Um, and so there's a difference between the people who know about annual town meeting, which is a lot more than people who know about all the stuff that happens behind the scenes and getting at. Those people are people who might become more engaged in the process, so those are different types of people that we could target.
And a lot, a lot of questions at meeting come from that too, like, you know, so for example, right, the Peabody School. Uh, is, uh, the, the select board and FinCom and the school committee, we're talking about. The, uh, eventual transfer of the Peabody School to the select board after the school, the school committee is done with it. Uh, and town meeting needs to approve that property transfer. And so, so there's a, a wonky little decision to make there, right, that we need to approve? But the context is, you know, the town will think about, you know, they'll, they'll begin to look for how much they can get for that, for that asset. You know, and the, the, then the question will be, you know, who's gonna buy it? What are they gonna do with that? Is it, how's it zoned? What's the impact of that? And so, you know, I, I'd never, I hadn't thought about it, but, you know, it was online, looking around, how big's the property? Yeah, and all that other stuff, right? So, so this little technical motion, right, engages a whole context around a larger issue. And when we hear about it for the first time, we wind up asking questions at meeting, and that, and that takes time. But.
And, and so, um, I, we don't have to, have to do this now, but, um, when we finalize our questions. You know, maybe there's a little blurb for context for each one, like much of the work happens before town meeting, you know.
Yeah.
Um, not, not for now, but.
So, so, yeah, the survey one, uh, is, is, uh, dare I say a bit didactic or, or, um. A pedantic, I don't know which, uh, um, or, or other. Uh, but part of the idea was to help, again, provide the context about why we're asking.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, and, and, you know, that the, that there is something. Educational is maybe the wrong word, but you can learn something, if you can find the survey interesting, like, oh, I didn't know that. Then, then maybe again, we get, we, we're more likely to get to the end of the survey with the, with the respondent.
Yeah, maybe there's like some way to. Um, I, I was like trying to limit the amount of reading someone has to do, like, as they're going through it on their phone, they're just clicking things, but like, I do agree that some sort of educational component is. Useful, um, I tried to do that a little bit in ti- in terms of changes, like, this is the, what, you know. Um, you'll see, I guess we'll see it when we get there, but to add a little bit of blurb about what that means, what that change means. So are they a little bit more informed about what's going on, but it's hard in a few words.
Uh, moving on, uh, question twelve, um.
Yes, I took this from your, um, survey, Eric, about how much people would like to be. Involved, um, generally looking towards people who want to be more involved. And looking at what options they select in terms of, in making it, um, easier to attend. Um, for using this as kind of a stratifying variable.
You know, as I think about this, the scale I think is, is not, not. So it's either that I'm, I'm about the same, or that I wanna be more involved, uh, I'm much more involved, I mean. You know, I think, you know, maybe if I'm burned out, I wanna be less involved. You know, ah, but, but I think I've kinda feel like it would be just the, the, the top three there and not the bottom two.
Or maybe it's like, do you wanna be more involved, yes or no?
Yeah, yeah.
But I was thinking like poor like Perashar, who's been on like FinCom forever, maybe wanted to be less involved and thinking like there are a few people, but. I agree, I think it's a yes or no kind of thing here.
And, and again, uh. Why, why are we asking they wanna participate more? Because are we thinking that, um, they want to attend town meeting but haven't had a chance to yet, or?
Um, yes, I think if we look at the response and the, the, look at the. Um, yes, I think if we look at the response and the, the, look at the, the. Things that people who say they do want to become more involved, um. We look at the options they say and what would benefit them or would, would improve their experience. Those are items that would be helpful. For people who are looking to do more.
Okay. And so I guess I would say, um, there may be two things we want to capture. One is do people want to. Participate more. And maybe we qualify it as volunteer on board a committee, attend meetings. But then I guess another question I think we're interested in is do they want to be more informed? Because it would be great for people to say, I do want to be more informed before I go to town meeting. And I would look at them as two different things, right? There's the passive. You know, getting in of information, which I still think is super valuable.
Right.
Figure out how to do that later. And then there's the. I, so when I see participate, to me, it's almost more active. And so I guess I'd. Put a little note here to see, do we want to divide this into two questions? That's more of a passive information receiving and, um. To, uh, active participation, perhaps on a board or committee, or even attending a meeting, I think is active as a listener.
Yeah, I was thinking of this like starting very low level as like attending a meeting, attending more meetings. Versus volunteering, which is like, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, which I think would take it to a new level.
Yeah. Okay. But anyway, can you just put a little note here to think about, you know, if.
I got it. I have it in, in my notes. And I think what I'll do probably after this, maybe Eric, if this makes sense to you, is I can take this version that you. Um. Hold together. I can make edits based on this conversation that we've had today and then. Recirculate it. Um, but obviously we're still going on, so we can talk about this at the end as well.
Sure, sure. But I, I, I agree with you. Uh, moving on to 13. Um, this looks familiar, actually. Um. I think, um, the two things I noted about this, this question though, is that these are, for the most part, these are things about meeting. The, this one, um. Uh, is, um. Uh, I think I would want to rephrase that to, I believe that my vote at town meeting should be private.
With the stem of the question being what complicates attending town meeting, um, maybe you, um, it should be something. I get what you're saying here.
Yeah.
Again. What are we gonna do? What are we? I, I think the vote in public is important and I want to. Capture that somewhere else, but all of those other things. Are we going to address all of those other things? Cause. I feel like we're capturing challenges in other places and. And I, I don't know that this grain, level of granularity matters that I'm open.
Yeah. So to your point, Kristen, I, I mean, you're asking this question for the most part asks, what is it about you? That makes coming to town meeting hard. And, and, um, and you know, what you're saying is how does that knowledge help us? In some cases it identifies, you know, a segment of the community that we want to try to have a specific intervention for. Right? But, but to your point, we kind of tried to ask that earlier in the survey. Um, the thing that we want to get to is what is it about town meeting that gets in your way of attending? Right? And so that is not this question.
I was thinking of this like, um. Well, I was thinking of it as like, what makes to, uh, in attending actual annual town meeting difficult for you?
Yeah.
Thinking of this as a descriptive information we would provide in a report. For. This information. So in our final report for this committee saying like, these are the things that make it challenging for people. And here are the recommendations. It's. Um, do we need that? No, I think it would provide some good color and it's. Also makes people feel heard maybe a little bit like they're reading this or like, yes, all these things like it is really hard. And you, you have recognized that I don't like to go out at night because I can't drive in the dark, which is like a comment that was on the town meeting feedback. But it is maybe a lot to read and could take some time for folks. Um, so is it essential? I don't think it's essential.
So, so we're applying, uh, of, of critical frame here, which is that we want to make this, the survey. As succinct as possible, using the lens that the questions that we ask are going to inform what our recommendations are. A different perspective is that the results from the survey help the community understand itself better.
Okay.
Right? And, and, um, you know, uh, the, uh, survey that helps the community understand itself better is going to naturally have more questions about the community. And so, so that's a judgment to make about whether or not, you know, a broader survey that way can get it can, you know, people will fill that out or not. But this, this to me speaks to that broader interest.
Okay. And I do appreciate that, you know, people feel heard. I think that's, I think that's great.
Yeah. Yeah.
What did we decide to do about? I do not like to vote in public because I think that's important, but I almost think that's important in a separate question.
I mean, if we don't want to keep it here, we can move it just to keep it in, in improvements and say like. Something about having a private vote. Um.
And it's possible to keep it here and, um, do something else.
Or maybe say something like, I don't like everyone to see how I'm voting. Or. Something of that nature.
Um, how about I believe that my vote at town meeting should be private? Because voting at town meeting is different than voting in an election. And so I don't want to confuse voting.
Exactly. Yeah, I, I, I agree.
So, yeah.
I was thinking that didn't go with the question stem, but I think, I think you're right. It, it does work fine here. So I'm going to just write that down.
Okay.
And I apologize. I have to leave at three thirty today and.
Uh.
Sorry to bow out of this fun thing. So hopefully we get through as much as possible.
I think we're doing well.
Yeah.
But we're recognized. Yeah. Um. So, uh, I, this question, I think, uh, you for moving on, is it okay?
Mm hmm. Oh, yeah.
Question 14, um. I didn't have any issues. I didn't have any issues with that. Uh, made sense to me.
Maybe some, a little context. I thought this might be useful is like if we do want to try to cut down the length, finding the places where people don't find value is. This might, and maybe there's some other things to add or subtract and maybe getting Carmen's feedback, um, on this too, um, offline or whatever.
I think, I think as we seek to, to change some elements like to, to, um. Yeah, I mean, this, this question goes back to the, the 96 survey as well. And we could argue that people's attitudes about this probably haven't changed that much. Um, I think when we get into, uh. Uh, some of the fundamental changes, I think understanding attitudes about listening to each other. Uh, uh, I think are pretty important. Um. Uh, but, and I think. I think, you know, this, this speaks to the core appreciation that we may have for some of the democratic process stuff. Right? Um, so I would be reluctant to cut this.
Oh, I like, I like this. The only thing I would suggest is where it says presentations about the town. Um, maybe we try to qualify that a little bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't really know what all of these mean necessarily. So that's where I thought like getting feedback from folks who are more experienced with the meeting itself.
Yep.
This would be useful because if I don't, then probably a lot of people wouldn't.
But I, I, I think this is good. And I was trying to decide whether I liked the term valuable or not, but. Can't think of a better one. And, and. There are many things that I find valuable. So I think it's, yeah, useful or valuable, but I, it is valuable, especially, especially trying to get at the part about, um. You know, deliberation. And so explicitly calling out hearing others' views, I think is really important. Um, and then maybe even making up my mind. Yeah. So anyway, we, we can massage those words later, but I think this is important.
Again, we, you know, we have town meetings through these different identities. Right? It's a job, right, to go legislate, right? It's a job to go make approvals, right? Uh, and, and it is embodied in the mechanism of the legislature. It's also a community event, a community identity event. Right? And so the valuable thing, you know. You know, it's also a way that the town, uh, interfaces with the communities that, that, you know, we get to see who our select people are. And oh, that's the town manager. No idea, you know, that kind of stuff. And so, so, so the presentations about the town come back to like, oh. You know, we're the highway department. We have a highway department, you know, um, um, roads department and, and, uh. This is what we're doing. We're thinking a lot about culverts this year, that, that kind of stuff as well. So. It's not just one thing about, about, you know. Approving motions. Um. Uh. So valuable and satisfied, um. Uh. Valuable is how important are they for the process? Uh, and then satisfied is how is my experience at the meeting? Uh, are we spending too much time with this stuff? Are these questions clear?
Yeah, now that I, now that I see this again, after a few days, like I think.
Yeah.
These could be, one of these could be removed, maybe. Because I don't know that we would do anything different analytically from, I think they do get it to slightly different points potentially, but I don't think we would necessarily. I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, okay, that, that's good. The other thing I just realized is, um. One of the things that happens at town meeting is, uh, we often hear from the same. Public commenters. Could we add in the, um, valuable thing, hearing from a variety of, um. You know, town residents rather than just a select few, or is that too leading of a, of a question?
Uh, you know, we have a possible intervention about asking people to, 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 to discourage repeat speakers.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so that might cover that there.
And, um, yeah.
So do you think we should delete like 15 and just have one question that has these options?
I would be fine with that.
Keep with just like how they value it?
Right. And then we, we.
Yeah, I think so.
We could assume all parts are valuable and then look at time only.
Uh, Carmen, let me recognize you, please.
I'm not sure in question 14, what making up my mind means.
I, I feel like, so the way that I'm hoping that we massage that a little bit is like, um. Making up my mind based on. The deliberation or the discussion in the room is kind of what I would like to hear, something to that effect.
How is that different from hearing others' views?
Because hearing others' views, um, to me, it doesn't necessarily inform my decision, right? I might, I have to sit there. I have to listen to everybody. I have to hear them. But then actually, um, making a decision based on that. But I would like. To see if we could, um. Make these, what we have in there really count for all those things so that it is clear to people.
What if, uh, you rephrased making up my mind as opportunity to consider my decision?
Okay.
I, and, and, and I don't know, maybe that's, maybe that's not any clearer.
Yeah, but I mean, that's what I think. I think we'll, we'll brainstorm a few things, but I, I mean, that's to me a critical piece of being a town meeting and hearing the deliberation is. Um, even if I go in there thinking one way, I really do enjoy hearing what other people say, particularly people that I don't necessarily agree with. Such that I can go, huh? Um, so what, however, we capture that is, I think, important.
Um, and do we want to focus on? How valuable it is or how much time we spend doing that thing?
I, I think valuable, but I'm, I'm open.
Uh, valuable or useful, I think, um.
Yeah.
I guess I'm talking, because the more I'm thinking about it, I'm like. I think a lot of these things are very valuable, but I also might think we spent too much time doing it.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And that's like the place, that's where intervention comes in.
Yeah.
But I don't know. I don't know. Sorry, Eric.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. I, I think I interrupted you interrupting me. I'm not sure, but, but, um, but you know, we know that we need to make some things shorter, right? And the question is if we make things shorter, what do we break? Right? So, so, um. That to me is the question. We need to test the values that way. And that, that's not. Yeah.
Leave them both in. Leave them both in because.
Yeah.
We might say that's really valuable, but we're spending too much time on that.
So I can't tell the difference between these two questions right now, just in talking and being, you know, like, I, 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 so.
I want, maybe one example is like, I think it's very valuable to hear other people's views. However, I do think the debate is too long on that.
Yes.
And I think that that is. Um, somewhere that intervention could happen to keep.
Agree.
Some of that, but not so much of that. But you wouldn't get that if I just said it's very valuable.
I think, yeah, two questions. Keep them both.
Right. So what should change about debate? I'd give the question. Right? You know, it's, these things are valuable, but what I want in debate is to have less time on hearing from, 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 from so and so. Um. Um. So I think, uh, I have a lot of comments here, uh, and they speak to, I think, some things that I think are. Things that we're going to try to do no matter what we hear in the survey. Uh, uh, and, uh, I think, uh. So. I want to give, because I know Kristen needs to go in four minutes. I just want to pause and just talk about next steps, if that's okay.
May, and maybe.
Yeah.
For this specific question, but before we adjourn, I think this is a larger, maybe a larger group discussion about what sits in this table. And I think we need to ask like, is this feasible? And would we actually make this recommendation? And if. Those aren't true or. In the near or distant future, let's say, then it shouldn't go on this table and mislead people about what we might do. So I think there is. Probably a larger group discussion that needs to happen for this.
The other thing I would add is, um. To, to consider before we talk, yes, I would, I think that'd be great to have more people's input and things like that. And absolutely, I don't want to mislead people by saying, what was on the survey? Why can't we do it? Um, we use the word improvement here. Which is relevant because we do want to improve the experience for people. I'm also curious about if people would be more likely to attend as a result. And they're different and they're different enough that I don't think we can capture.
Right.
Both. Um, and so. May I, then in that, if that's the case, then.
I like, I like the way you're thinking about this. I think maybe we could even do like less likely to attend, just as likely to attend, more likely to attend.
Right.
Because really what we want to do is have people be more likely to attend and not necessarily, because they could answer, yes, this will improve it.
Right, that's what I'm wondering.
But I'm not, still not going to go, but I'm sure that would make it better.
Right.
Yeah.
So I use the framework of accessibility and experience, right? Accessibility, more likely to attend and grouping, uh, you know, interventions under that. Versus experience, do I have a better experience of meeting? There's a coupling in the sense that if the meeting is going to suck, I'm not going to go.
Right.
Right? But, but, but independent of that, it would be accessibility or experience and meeting experience. So, so.
Final thought on the, I, sorry, Eric, I know you were trying to wrap it up. Then I think I had a next section where we, I separated out specifically items that would require legal changes to make the recommendation. That way it made it clear to the audience that like, this isn't something that's easy, but it would follow the same framework. As this, but would be very explicit that that's not legal right now and would take time because people don't know that remote voting isn't legal.
Right.
People are probably annoyed at that, that is, that we're not doing that. Why?
Yeah.
Anyway, Eric, sorry, go ahead.
Well, we can continue after Kristen drops off. I just wanted to make sure that Kristen had a clean exit.
Yeah, this is, this is great.
Uh, so, so we'll discuss, if we can, we'll discuss a little bit more about this stuff. Uh, but it sounds like the next step is going to be that Katie is going to take. Survey two and make a rev of it and then pass it around. Uh, I would, perhaps if you can get that out. Uh, I don't know what your schedule is, all right? But if you can get it out by the end of the week, it can go in the packet for the next meeting. Uh, uh, the, the, the next, uh, um, the logistics meeting next Tuesday. Uh, and then we'll all see it that way as well through the packet. Uh, and then. We'll discuss the survey with that group as well and then come back to the survey with our group. Uh, two weeks from now.
And so to your original question at the beginning of the meeting, Eric, when can we meet again? If, because joining the groups, I think is going to be, is going to be great. I think we're.
Yeah.
Certainly ready for that. Um. I. Can come, if it's Tuesdays, I can come evenings, stay or evenings. Once it moves off of Tuesday, it's harder. Um.
Got it.
So, um, Katie, I don't know if you can do a Tuesday evening.
Yeah, I usually can do Tuesday evenings right now. I actually have to check with my husband because he usually sometimes has an activity in the fall. So let me.
Okay.
All right.
Get back to you.
So that if we can do it Tuesday evenings, we, I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
I think, I think that other, the other, other folks are geared to Tuesday evenings are ready. So.
Right. And so merging the two groups back, I think it's going to be great.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is it impossible for people to do, um, late this time instead of evenings in the fall?
Um, I haven't heard from everybody yet.
Do Tuesday evening?
I need to hear from a few people about that. So.
And I can usually, if, if needed, so I, I think on, on Tuesdays right now, I can block either of those times.
Uh, so Kristen, uh, I, we, we can let you go.
I'm gonna go and thank you so much for all the discussion and the survey. Bye, folks.
Thank you. Um, by Katie, may we continue with just talk, talking about question 16?
Yep.
So, so, um. Um, I think that, uh. To me, I, you know, so this question of like, what can we do? Uh, I think feasibility is conditioned on demand, you know, uh, so that. Uh, uh, there are things that we can't do because there, there's statute against them. Right? And there are things that, that are harder to do because no one's made a good argument for them, or it doesn't seem as though maybe the public really cares about that.
Yeah, I was thinking more like administratively. Yeah, I was thinking more like administratively or like logistically, like if we talk to people who like put the meeting together and they're like, this would be so. Much work, it's like basically impossible to do that, and then we think eh, that recommendation isn't so valuable that it. It like justifies that additional work, I guess that's what I was thinking in terms of feasibility.
Sure, but we don't know, we don't know, we can make some forecasts about it, right? Like, we know that, that, you know, AV expense for meeting is, is a big chunk of it. Right, so, so that when we think about having multiple locations for meeting, that doubles the AV expense. And maybe that's okay and maybe it's not, right, but, but, yeah. So I'm, I'm cautious about, about limiting ourselves to options that might be effective or impactful. But, and by, by locking down in feasibility first.
Yeah, I was thinking like a very um high, I got low bar for what's infeasible, I don't know the worst way to say that. But basically unless something is like very clearly not really possible, or that we wouldn't really recommend it, then. Yeah, so that's what I was thinking.
So uh Carmen, please.
Uh I, I think you're on the right track there, I think it's important to consider. Uh you know, if we had unlimited funds, um. What, what we might wanna do, but um, given the fact that we have limits on funding and staff time. Um there are some things that we wouldn't make a choice to do. And um, and I think it's useful for the public to understand that, well, yeah, we did think about that, we thought about having the meeting in multiple places. But it turns out that not only is there an AV cost, but you have to have overtime for firefighters in multiple places. Police in multiple places, directing traffic in multiple places, school buses going to multiple places. And uh, and it turns out that it's, it's much more expensive than you think, when um it sounds really easy. But um, you know, when, when you look at what the cost is, it, it may be a thing that you just can't do. But I don't think that that should discourage you from thinking outside of the box and thinking about things that maybe would work and then. Looking at what stands between us and being able to implement. Uh some of those ideas and you never know whether something creative could come up. That would solve some of the apparent obstacles to um a potential solution being feasible.
Yeah, good, thank you. Um so from my perspective, and this reflects my own thinking, it may not be the consensus of, of this group or the group as a whole. Uh I think, you know, I think we really want to ask this. I think that um, this is an interesting trade off, uh I think. Uh I would say end earlier, but have more nights as opposed to shorter sessions, because the goal is to the end time is earlier. Uh my goal will be that, you know, we don't, don't, we don't do new, new, new business after nine P M, right? And that winds up pushing out, you know, that, that twelve hours goes to net nine hours over four nights. Uh sort of over, over, yeah, that, you know, over four nights, but, but um. But ending earlier, I think, I, I think I wouldn't. I don't think it would be this, I would think that the, the right approach would be that we would schedule a high interest article on a given night. So if we have up to three or four, then we know that Tuesday is gonna be Article X and Wednesday is gonna be Article Y.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe including both that option and also high interest articles in a single night. Because like for me, I was thinking like, there are a couple of high interest articles, I can only choose one night to go, so then I have to choose between my high interest articles.
Yeah.
Obviously, like the timing is challenging because some of those take a long time and aren't guaranteed. But.
Yeah, fair enough, I think um it's really about making it easier to budget time to come to meeting for high interest articles. Right, maybe that's the question, and there are different forms of that, but it's about making it easier to, easier to budget time. Um, I think this is a really important question for us, for us to ask. I don't think we need to ask this because we're gonna try to shorten it. You know, uh, uh, we know we want to shorten it, we're not exactly sure how to shorten it and. And you know, the, the survey from ninety six, you know, what if we like drop recognitions and things like that? But I think that, you know, the strategies that we're gonna have to shorten it come into how we compose and review the consent calendar. Uh how we um address amendments, uh and how we discourage or don't discourage um. Uh how we nor, how we have norms around debate, so, but we want to shorten it.
Yeah, I guess I didn't know that we, which I am happy to hear you say that, I didn't know that we had alignment over shortening the meeting. Or if that was like a given, I mean, I think everyone would be happy with shortening the meeting. But I don't know that that is explicit.
Well, we don't know whether it takes to shorten it, right? We don't know whether it takes to shorten it, right? I mean, clearly, you know, having more stuff in the consent calendar would, would be a, a, a way to go.
Yeah, and maybe, yeah, maybe I was seeing this as a way to have. Um town support behind removing elements, like we can say ninety percent of the people said that. Shortening the meeting by removing elements would lead to, would cause significant improvement, and as such, we're recommending doing these couple of things. And that way we have numbers to support that, that's not anecdotal, maybe.
But this is pretty, this is pretty vague too. Overall, my, my judgment was it wouldn't hurt to take it away because uh. It seemed like we're gonna try to do it. I think, I think um. You know, I think that there's some of this now, I don't know really um how well it's understood. Uh and you know, I think it's part of it is how at meeting, the moderator administers a meeting. Um but I think this is a thing where, you know, we have an opportunity to do more there. Uh and so I don't think we need to ask about it because I think it's an area where uh, uh it's, it's obvious that we want to improve there. I think discouraging repeat speakers is fraught, but I think it's a really interesting question. Uh I, I think um. Uh or uh, I think, uh, I think again, this could be folded into norms. Uh I don't know that we need to ask about it, uh we could go, well, you know, they're not looking for the obvious stuff, right? You know, do we need to ask about obvious interventions because they're common sense? Uh but I think it speaks to, you know, in terms of our information seeking, what's really gonna help us make a trade off about it, about something. I, I'm not happy with reducing speaker time, I think that, that, you know, we tried that in our first meeting, going from two minutes for a comment to one minute to a comment and. Uh one minute's short, unless you're really well prepared, so. I, I'm okay with leaving it in, but I, there are a lot of doubts about whether or not it's actually gonna be fair to people, and it's gonna make it even harder to speak up. Uh so I have my doubts about that. Um, this to me is like pretty important and a no brainer as well, right? I think the questions come back to how do we make that work, you know, uh there, cause it's not obvious, right? Sometimes it's obvious what's in the consent calendar, I think, you know, Keith, the thing that Keith has talked about, about. You know, in a way being more permissive about what goes into this consent cal- calendar initially, and then having the, the call of the articles. Uh speaks to that, but again, I don't think that we need to ask about it because it's, it's something we're gonna try to do.
Well, I would say that none of this is really explicit that we're going to try to do. At least like, I think this is all things that we've maybe thought about in our own heads, but the community definitely hasn't really thought about, at least most people to the extent we have.
Right.
And I think gauging insights into these items lends support for things that. May make a few loud people unhappy, um but shows support in the broader context for some of the things that we would do. Um I would just say, I just don't think a lot of these are necessarily obvious that we are doing and definitely not obvious to people outside the committee. So I guess food for thought.
Okay, so good, good to push back on that, thank you. You know, so in my view, right, this is a thing that's a no brainer, you know, uh, uh. Um this as well, is something we should just be trying to do. Uh, this is a bit different, this, this idea of having a survey, um, well, no, that's actually no, that. I don't see the thing that I proposed, yeah.
Yeah, you could put that on here, I guess I didn't. Fully underst, and maybe I just thought that was like logistically really challenging to do, to have like a survey, et cetera, in the timeframe. But you definitely add it back in, and I think this is where like a larger committee, this decision on what.
Sure.
These items actually are would make a lot of sense.
It's a wonky solution, um I think, I think it's technically feasible, it would makes, it would require some changes. But the idea of having a preferendum is that we could all come in the meeting knowing a little bit more about. Where, where the community is standing as an issue, and that could be a broader sample than the people actually show up. Um so, but you're right, there's some operational stuff like that. Um so I didn't feel, again, you know, I thought that these were all like, yeah, we should do those things and, and. So I, the electronic voting, this should be on for sure, I would not categorize it under privacy. Though I think there are arguments that, that it does improve privacy, I think one thing about clickers is that. You know, this core question about whether or not a vote in a legislature should be public or not. Uh and you know, connecting privacy concerns to voting uh at, at town meeting, you know, go back to, to, to. So with clickers, we can log the votes, right, and my vote via clicker at town meeting could actually be less private than what we have right now with the pieces of paper. Right, because the log and, and uh is, is public record, uh so, so.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, 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 so, so, yeah. So if I, if I do my joints right, right, so, so I, I wouldn't categorize it under privacy, and in fact, I think I would. Uh you know, I, I liked my categorization of accessibility and meeting experience, that could be too wonky. But I would think about proposing the solutions without the categories.
People have been thinking about that in terms of privacy, I think, at least that's like my impression of it, and like. Maybe that's an important point for people to know that that's like not actually more private, I also don't think it's more efficient than what we have. And like, I guess hearing the pros and cons, et cetera, from the clicker folks.
Right, right, right.
Useful, I'm learning a lot today.
Yeah, yeah, always, so, so, you know, so again, you know, with clickers, I mean, it's, it's a little, 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 little fuzzy, right? So, so uh hearing is great for that, I think, you know, the clicker thing um. And uh the, these guys um. Um all, all I think, all I believe should be presented in terms of, you know, a description and pros and cons. So it's a different format for that, and I think again, it's because I think they're hard to understand. We think, you know, common sense, common sense, they're great, but then the, the impacts are not so good, so.
Yeah, I think that makes, definitely makes sense.
Yeah.
Um I do think like, give, for, for the kind of straightforward items. Um I guess I was, I'm like thinking like, if so many of those are already straightforward to this committee that we would do. What's the purpose of serving people? In general, if, if a lot of it is like not really in question.
Well, you know, so what's straightforward to me is not necessarily straightforward to, to you, right? Or, or to the rest of the committee, and I think, you know, when we do make recommendations, I think they're, they need to reflect the judgment of the whole committee. I can argue whatever, right, and, and, you know, um I think, uh so, but, you know, I, I think that. And not everything will be things that people have budgets for doing, right, or will have the, the interest in doing. Uh and so, you know, me going, so, so. But, but there's a question about whether or not, you know, we think it's a good idea, I can argue for that, or do we need town support? You know, do we need, you know, support to, to, to make that argument to skeptical select board, you know, for example? Uh or, or um. You know, or people just want to know that we asked about it.
Yeah, I also, I guess I see this also as like an opportunity. Um like if we do have even low hanging fruit items, let's say, missing from here, that could be also. I mean, I guess that's where open comments are valuable, but I mean, the community could be like, well, they're not considering these like super easy things that would be.
Right.
Like, that we should be doing, so I guess there's some balance here.
Yeah, it speaks to perhaps what we say here, which is that, you know, we're thinking about a lot of things that are. I'll say it my way, right, we'll think about a lot of things that are obvious, you know? But these are the things that reflect some real trade offs or that we're just not sure about in terms of community support, and we'd like to know more about that.
Yep.
You know, and, and I think, you know, when we talk about the pros and cons about this stuff, you know, that. You know, con is, is, we'll never know if we're gonna see that. You know, it's a big con, so.
Yep.
Um, well, uh Katie, this was good for me, I, I think it was, I hope it wasn't too vigorous.
No, I, I, I think the discussion was great.
Yeah.
Um yeah, I would also look forward to hearing like uh uh my next version, like if there are any, like if you review your version of. Um survey items and you think that there's some that are missing because we didn't get to take a look at that today, like we can add those in. Um for discussion by the broader group as well, um so, like happy to do that, so let me know.
Yeah, I have to reflect on it, I mean, you know, clearly with this group, parsimony, parsimony and focus. You know, I think uh I don't see the other group being that different that way. Uh I think, you know, it's a big question again about, about what are people interested in, and what's a survey that people are interested in, in, in filling out? Uh and I, I can't, I never read on there, um I think um. I'll look at the survey one stuff and see if there's anything that I felt really would benefit. Uh and uh it, you know, I think for you to do a pass survey three, based upon survey two would be great, please.
Yep.
Uh and uh, and we'll continue to sort of, you know, improve. Uh good, um thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh thank you, everyone, uh I'm gonna close uh and sh, well, uh David Allen, I just see you. You have a, a one shot on a, on a, on a comment or question before we close. Uh if uh, if desired, just raise your hand, yes or no?
I think he might be trying to. Unmute. Give him a second.
Could be, yeah.
There, finally.
There we go, yeah.
This is bloody damned iPad is not responsive, sorry about that.
That's okay.
What you can see now, there, finally, whoa, sorry about that. So, I, several times now, uh the proposition I've tried to offer is that. There's some elements of this with enough involved that uh. Key sequence is that after the committee. Informs, educates, whatever word we want itself, then also it does that for the town. Before the survey questions are asked, and it's front and center here now. Uh electronic voting clickers is uh on there a couple of times. I'm obviously forbearing from going into any of the detail here about it, and I should and I will forbear, but. My experience is quite clear. It's crucial that the committee do some educating the town. Let me offer an example that I hope is helpful for seeing uh why this, at least. Once again, my experience uh is the case. A member of the select board changed their position on clickers. After hearing some detail that they were not familiar with before. And it doesn't matter whether it's a member of the select board, a person in town, although it uh. Illustrates that uh information played a pivotal role in where the person came out. I don't have in mind the sequencing, I'm sorry, from earlier when the survey goes at and all that sort of thing. Uh you'll be masters of that, but. Let me very, very strongly encourage, and the matter comes up actually in question fourteen as well, if I remember correctly. There, there folks are being asked uh elements of deliberation. Which is what a legislature really is, it's all deliberation, and you know, take the strongest position on it. Can't get this damn camera to, sorry. The implication is, hey, guess what? We can cut out uh some of the elements of deliberation, you don't have to listen, or you don't have. So forth, and of course, uh the suggestion that comes out of this. To ask set us such a set of questions. For me, anyway, uh presumes that first of all, there's some education. Uh whether in the survey or prior, that, that's what town meeting is. These are the elements of deliberation, so that you know that if uh you're going to not want to do those things. You're basically not going to want to do what you're there to do, and so.
Good, very, very good, David, I can, I can comment on that, thank you. Um go back and look at survey one, uh which is the longer one, and see if there's stuff in that that is, is, is important for you. Uh in terms of uh uh helping assessing how much people understand about meeting. Uh if you can take a look at the longer one, if you would, um I think.
I didn't even know there were two, I apologize, but I will, I will find it.
It's, yeah, it's in the thing. The, the packet, I think, you know, our intention, uh at least, as I, I understand it, as, as, as I've expressed it, is that. with uh the fun, the fuzzy things, the complicated things, uh these guys and the clickers is that we use, in effect, the ballot referendum format, some some neutral information and a a set of pros and cons. And so so the intention to um educate, quote unquote, would come uh in the context of the referendum format. Um, that's how we're thinking about it right now, and the committee uh back in June thought that we were okay, or May, thought that we were okay with that as well. Um, that's not to say that educating beforehand doesn't make sense. Uh I think we're balancing the interest of getting feedback on these with when we can do it. Uh and 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 providing information about it relative to when we can give feedback on it. I think that if we write the questions and we evaluate them, we can cut them. You know, if we feel like there's a lot of ambiguity about that, but the appropriate next step for us is to write the questions as pros and cons and see, see, see how clear they are. That's that's my sense of things.
So of course I appreciate, uh, for me, you could imagine a balance here. On the one side, uh getting some information back, and on the other side, being sure that things come out here that serve our democratic process.
Exactly.
You know how I come out on that one.
Very good, all right, thank you.
Uh, we do not want to give that up as far as I can see.
Yeah.
Thanks very much, I will go look at the uh number one and and come back, thanks.
Good, thank you, thank you. Um, I'm gonna have this close unless there's anything else from anybody else. Uh, good, thank you very much, everyone.